Good evening and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of September 26th, 2016. We have mics?
The mic's not working.
Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent meditation.
Whoa.
Working out. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and a God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of our chambers. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing, and anyone who wishes to speak on an item should come forward to the microphones and, after the clerk reads that item, the applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor of or opposed in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker, and as a reminder, the timer will sound after four minutes. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and all items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any item or on any issue not on the agenda for this date nor planned for a future agenda. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Yes, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, item number one.
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, please call the next item.
If not, we can vote on this item. It was introduced by Fellers.
So moved.
Second? Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item three, application of BDF LLC for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 350 feet by 350 feet at 605 North 8th Street on October 8th from noon to 11:00 p.m.
Hello, Kevin Reynolds, Captain Jacks, 2515 Washington Street.
Welcome. Please tell us a little bit about your item.
This is, what, the ninth year Market-to-Market Relay from Omaha to Lincoln, from the old market to the hay market, I guess. Forty-eight-hundred runners, good event. That's about all it is.
Any questions from the council? And this is for the reception afterwards when all the runners come storming in?
Yeah, it'll be interesting. Keith Urban's playing that night, so.
Oh, really?
Different than things for them this year or so.
All right, a lot of people downtown that night then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
Next are items four and five, application of White Elm Brewing Company for a Class C and Class L liquor license at 2717 South 8th Street, Suite 100, and the related manager application of Colby Wood.
Hello.
Did you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
My name's Colby Wood. My address is 2627 Van Dorn Street in Lincoln, and I'm speaking in support of our application as both a brew pub and our Class C liquor license.
Any questions from the council? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, please call the next item. Teresa?
All right, next are items six and seven, application of Code Beer Company for a Class I and Class L K liquor license at 200 South Antelope Valley Parkway, and the related manager application of Adam Holmberg. Did you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you really believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Adam Holmberg. I reside at 25455 South 54th Street in Firth, and I am the sole principal in Code Beer Company, and we're seeking a liquor license to operate a craft microbrewery at 200 South Antelope Valley Parkway and an attached public taproom.
Great. Any questions from the council?
Carl?
Yeah, you're in my hood, so.
We're good neighbors.
Yeah, give us a little more about the business. Will there be food or you'll be brewing there and?
Yeah, so we're going to have a 15-barrel brew house, initially just doing production for sales on-site, and then early on looking to enter the market in wholesale distribution. Initially, we'll hopefully provide some free light food, but nothing for sale initially. We do have reserved space for the kitchen, but we're seeking a partnership to run that side of the house, so we won't have it at open. Good.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
You.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item? Please call the next item.
All right, next is item eight, application of Duffy's Tavern for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 75 feet by 60 feet at 1400 O Street on October 6, 7, and 8 from noon to 2:00 a.m.
Hi, I'm Scott Hatfield, Duffy's Tavern, 1412 O Street here in Lincoln, and this is an application for Lincoln Calling, which is a music event that we're having October 6, 7, and 8 showcasing 120 bands at eight different venues throughout Lincoln. And this will be an outdoor show on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday behind Duffy's in our parking lot at the parish building.
Any questions? I think Carl might have one.
Carl's across the street, so Carl usually.
So what kind of music you playing this year?
Carl, I think you're going to love it. I think you should come over and check it out. We'll make sure that we can get you right in. It'll start Wednesday around 6:00. Well, Thursday around 6:00. Yeah, or we'll come up and get you. Happy to do that.
Does open the window.
It's a neat event. ALO and the Nebraska Department of Tourism are showcase sponsors, and I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a really neat event. This is kind of the first year that we've done it sort of on a bigger scale, more like South by Southwest in Austin, and I hope that it catches on, and I think, you know, you guys will be hearing about this event for many, many years to come, I hope.
Great, glad to hear it.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Thank you.
All right, seeing none, please call the next item.
All right, next then is item nine, application of Kurt Contour, Doing Businesses 501 Bar and Grill for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 73 feet by 120 feet at 501 West A Street on October 7 from 5:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. and October 8 from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hi, Kurt Contour, 501 Bar and Grill, 501 West A Street. We're doing a fundraiser for the Shriners called the Matt Bar tribute show, and we're raising funds for the burn unit, the Shriners burn unit, and we're going to have some outdoor bands and then a headliner from out of state inside later that night.
Want to follow? Any questions? Thank you for what you're doing. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 10, application of Piedmont Hospitality for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 100 feet by 150 feet at the shops at Piedmont at 1265 South Cotner Boulevard on October 8 from 5:00 p.m. to midnight.
Oh, no, I don't have to do that?
No.
Okay, all right. My name's Brian Wallingford. I reside at 2230 North 60th Street. This will be the second year for our Piedmont Oktoberfest, obviously held on October 8. It'll be from 5 to 11. We have an outdoor venue where we'll have a tent set up that's 60 by 90, obviously snow fence and everything around there. We have a third party who's doing the wristbands, checking IDs, bringing everybody in to make sure it is a 21 or older venue, so that's one of the ways that I'm taking to stop minors from drinking. We'll have 19 different beers on tap. We'll have a poker band that starts out tonight and a rock band that finishes it out.
Any questions? You're on a busy arterial road, but you're also adjacent to neighborhoods. How did it go last year going to midnight sound and?
Fantastic. Actually, at like 11:05, our generator went out during the last song, and everyone there continued to sing Sweet Caroline a cappella to finish out the night. It was a pretty good event. I've heard nothing but great from the neighborhood. A couple complained about the parking, but not very many. There's tons of parking around that area. No, it went pretty well. The only bad thing I've heard this year is that we're not doing a kids' event.
All right.
No hot dog eating contest?
No. That day was so hot. That was a mistake.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Brian? We just talked about it.
Please call the next item, Teresa.
Next is item 11, application of Lancaster Ag Society Lancaster Event Center for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 550 feet by 50 feet at the Muehlbach Motorsports Complex bleacher area at 4100 North 84th Street on October 8 from noon to midnight. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Lois Hartzell. I'm at 1431 North 95th Street. I'm here on behalf of the Ag Society and the Event Center. This is an annual Dirt Diva Truck and Tractor Pull. We will have hot dogs, for those that want hot dogs, hamburgers. There will also be the beer pot, water, all of that.
Okay, any questions? Why is it called Dirt Diva?
The promoter named it that, so it has a classy name, doesn't it?
Yeah.
It gets people to come out.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Please call the next item.
Madam Chair, I'd move approval of items three through 11.
Moved by John and seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Fellers?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions authorizing the mayor to execute a municipality program agreement between the city and NDR to include the city's improvements of 27th Street at the I-80 interchange between the on and off ramps.
Madam Chairman, members of council, Roger Feiger, representing Public Works and Utilities. What I have here is a map. Lincoln, this is 27th Street and the I-80 interchange at the north side of town, and the Nebraska Department of Rose will be repairing, replacing concrete on the on and off ramps of that interchange, as well as repair the bridge over 27th Street itself through that area's responsibility of the city of Lincoln. And that concrete is also in poor condition, and this agreement allows the state of Nebraska then to remove and replace the concrete, repair the concrete on 27th Street as they are doing their project, coordinate those so everything gets done at one time. And again, this agreement then, you'd be authorizing the mayor to sign that agreement to have the state go ahead and do that work, and we will reimburse them for the work being done. Plan is to bid that project. The NDR would bid that to construction this fall, the idea that construction would be spring/summer of 2017. I'd answer any questions.
Any questions? Trent?
Carl.
Carl.
Okay. From the resolution we got, it sounded like maybe there was some design change happening in the interchange. Is that true or just?
No, it's really pavement repair, restoring it back to its condition.
All right, thanks.
Roger, when we have these agreements with NDR and federal funds, there's some cost savings for the city, is there not? Can you speak to our sort of cost share?
Yes, I would think so.
Because if we had tried to undertake this without their assistance?
Yes. Anytime you can bid a project with more quantity, I think there is the potential of lower bid prices. Coordination, you're only out there one time, and we try to take advantage of doing this the both ways. So I can't give you an exact number, but clearly for efficiency and less inconvenience to the public in saving those dollars, this agreement also makes sure that the city of Lincoln can use its share of our federal aid money on this project as well, which reduces some of the bureaucracy and some of the environmental issues, and we can spend that money in a project that's pretty easy to meet the federal requirements.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? All right, please call the next item.
All right, next is item 13, a resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city and encouraging other institutions to recognize the day.
Now, this has been introduced by Councilman Eskridge, and do we have an, do you want to have an applicant speak for you?
Yes, I had asked Lynn Quinzer if she could introduce this for us.
And it looks like we may have a lot of people want to testify on this item, which is wonderful. So what I'd like to do is, as, yes, as we move through the testimony, if you could come up while someone else is speaking, get your name on the paper, and be ready to go after the previous testifier completes their comments. That would be great. We want to try and keep this moving for everybody. Lynn?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm speaking here today in my capacity as the pastor for Sacred Winds. It is a Native American congregation here in Lincoln, Nebraska. The address of my church is 2400 South 11th Street, 68502. I grew up in South Dakota, and my background is closely tied to the Native American people and traditions. I'm here to introduce this resolution that will declare the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lincoln. As you recall, members from the Lincoln Indian Center came before the council on August 15th with the request that Lincoln join other cities to promote the same designation for this day. As you know, this is also the designation for Columbus Day. Now, while Columbus Day is not a city holiday, this resolution does not replace Columbus Day, but it enhances the day. As Indigenous Peoples' Day, this day serves as a positive day to recognize the culture and history and the contributions of Native Americans, just as people with Italian backgrounds celebrate it as Columbus Day. And what is unique about the second Monday of October is that these two celebrations are inextricably linked. The arrival of Christopher Columbus in America ultimately had a profound impact on all of our first peoples here. So I would really encourage you to support this resolution. Indigenous Peoples' Day is an important way to celebrate the people who were here first. Thank you. There are others here to testify, but I will answer any questions.
Questions? John?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Quinzer. And again, you're representing your relationship with the church and not the mayor's office.
That's correct.
You emphasized the second week in October and made a relationship there when Columbus came. But are there not other days of the year that might be more appropriate to celebrate Indigenous people and Native Americans?
No, I don't believe there are. Now, while we have a number of holidays and celebrations throughout the year, this one particular holiday was created to and tied to that discovery, and that also resulted in the subjugation of Native peoples in the Americas that resulted in a lot of suffering. But at the same time, up until that very moment, we had so many thriving cultures and communities and cities and governments across America, North and South, that are very important to honor and to remember, and this day would be the day to do that on, not any other.
If I may just follow up, you said subjugate the Native Americans, and I guess that's my point. Why would we want to celebrate something like that and instead not celebrate other, another time that would be more celebratory and not?
Because this marks.
Not be antagonistic. Thank you for letting me finish.
This marks, mm-hmm, this marks the moment in time when all those things changed. However, we have a number of contributions that were made by Native Americans that enhanced the accomplishments that the coming to the Americas of Europeans had. For instance, our government based in Washington, D.C., our federal government, was taken largely from the Iroquois League. It was borrowed heavily from their governance structure, and these are things that are important to remember, and it's important for us to work together today on those issues and understand how much we depend upon one another for those things. However, for this purpose, this would be the day to do this.
Roy?
I've received some communications from other members of the community who expressed concern that the selection of this date was, in fact, intended to be a repudiation of Columbus Day. Could you comment on that?
Oh, I don't think so at all. I think that what we need to remember is that we have a plurality in our country and that we need to honor everyone's heritage and everyone's contributions. And I think that doing this helps to give some equal time to the other half of that equation in this matter. I certainly would not denigrate anybody who is of Italian descent or Spanish descent on the accomplishments that were made with the colonization of the United States or North and South America.
Cindy?
Thanks. So are you open? You had said that it's not meant to replace Columbus Day, but to enhance Columbus Day. So are you open to having designated Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Well, since the city of Lincoln doesn't officially celebrate Columbus Day, that it is a state holiday, I think it would be very fitting for Lincoln as the capital city of Nebraska to celebrate the other end of that and have Indigenous Peoples' Day. It certainly is not a holiday per the Lincoln Municipal Code or anything like that, so it's just a simple resolution to designate this as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Lincoln.
So would you be open to the date being designated Columbus and Indigenous Peoples' Day?
I don't believe so. I don't know. I'm going to have to let other people speak to that.
Okay, sure.
I don't, I'm not going to pretend to know how others would care to venture into that. Thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you. Next. If there are other folks who'd like to come, please approach now and sign in, and thank you.
I'm Deb Andrews, 1235 A Street. I support the resolution to declare Indigenous Peoples' Day in Lincoln. I thank Councilman Eskridge for his sponsorship, but I have two recommendations. Number one, I recommend the date of May 12 to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Number two, I recommend instead declaring it Chief Standing Bear Day. In 1879, during one of the darkest times in our nation's history, a period of death and displacement for Indigenous people by soldiers and settlers, Ponca Chief Standing Bear stood before Judge Elmer Dundee and declared, "God made me, and I am a man." On May 12, 1879, Judge Dundee ruled that an Indian is a person. It is long past time to revisit that court ruling and its implementation, that the Indian is a person. Today is our government less brutal to the Indigenous people. Indian lands are owned and managed by the federal government, which prevents tribes from capitalizing on their resources. The reservation legal framework is detrimental to economic growth. According to the Nebraska Department of Education's State Accountability, Winnebago District Performance Scores for Spring 2016 reveal: Reading, grade three, 47% met state standards; Reading, grade 11, just 24% met state standards; Math, grade three, 24% met state standards; Math, grade 11, 0% met standards. These children in the Winnebago District Schools are not being taught reading and math, skills necessary for independent living as a man. A nurse, member of the Omaha Tribe, employed at the Indian Health Services Hospital in Winnebago, Nebraska, blew the whistle on life-threatening deficiencies at the hospital, substandard care for a person. She was fired from her job. Medicare terminated the hospital's contract due to deficiencies. Yes, a day to honor, the thousands of years Indigenous people and their sophisticated, complex societies lived on and loved, this land is long overdue. Instead of doubling down on Columbus Day, honor a great man on the day of a landmark decision. I support this resolution. Annually, let us reassess if our government yet recognizes the Indian is a person on May 12, Chief Standing Bear Day, a great man made by God.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
I'm Dale Gutierrez, 610 North 47th Street, and I'm in favor of this resolution. So I stand before you all as a growing segment of your population. I'm a Chicano, a Mexican-American. I am the product of the subjugation of the Mexica people by Cortez, which the gateway was opened by Columbus. Simon Bolivar, the liberator of South America, stated regarding the nature and significance of rape and sexual violence in the creation of the mestizo by the European conqueror, "The most impure origin is that of our being. All that preceded us is wrapped with a black veil of crime. We are the sons and daughters of the women, girls abused, assaulted, and raped and sold by the European conqueror." De las Casas witnessed a rape during the Spanish conquest of Mexico and Jalisco, stating that a Spaniard took a maiden by force to commit the sin of flesh with her, dragging her away from her mother, finally having to unseize his sword to cut off the girl's hands, and when the damsel still resisted, the conqueror stabbed her to death. We are the sons and daughters of the martyrs. We are the creation of what people want to glorify. So speaking from my perspective, I just don't understand the hesitation in keeping someone who is on par with Heinrich Himmler, who created the situation that led to the American Holocaust through rape, through the sword, through forced conversions, and people are hesitant to say, well, let's just add Indigenous Day to it. I don't understand that. I mean, do you people support what happened 500 years ago? I stand before you essentially a descendant of the product of rape of my people. We need to think about, given the Indigenous people their due. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Marcel Kilsenemy. I reside at 7620 Bayberry Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska. Please forgive my appearance. Unfortunately, I had a pretty horrific accident a couple weeks back, which kind of limits my ability to dress.
Sir, excuse me, would you spell your last name, please?
K-I-L-L-S, space, E-N-E-M-Y. Kilsenemy.
Thank you.
Thank you. I am a member of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe of South Dakota. Growing up with my name was very difficult. Being a native individual was very difficult. Try not to get emotional, stuff like this usually tries to trip me up, but with this, I am in favor of renaming or redesignating this day to Indigenous Peoples' Day due to the fact that the day that the second October currently represents is one that does have a pretty tragic history for all of us. You know, for general Americans on Columbus Day, same with Thanksgiving Day, you don't have to go through the torment and pain that we have to relive. you don't have to go through the torment and pain that we have to relive every year. You don't have to go through the torment and pain that you have to deal with by your peers and those that are superior to you and all around you in the entire system. I don't want to kind of get into the history, as Dale kind of alluded to, the history of Columbus is not one that is favorable and is not one that should be celebrated or cherished or even acknowledged, in my opinion. I would not be in favor, me personally, of adding in Indigenous Day along with Columbus Day. For native people, Columbus does represent somebody who is very horrific. I personally feel that we need to rename this day to Indigenous Peoples' Day so that way we can have some sort of pride, some sort of joy or happiness that is associated with any day in the United States. We are the first people of the Americas. We do have huge contribution. We still do. Currently in Nebraska, you know, there's a lot of tragedies that are happening to our peoples all over the place. White Clay is one of those severely tragic situations that is currently happening here in Nebraska. But like I said, we do need to have something that we can acknowledge and have some sort of pride in. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, welcome.
I'm Chandra Walker from Omaha Tribe. Address is 5123 West Kingsley, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68524. I'm in for favor for Indigenous Day because the psychological, emotional damage of growing with the day that knowing that people celebrate a man that like murdered and sex-slaved children is very hard. I asked my 11-year-old today, so how do you feel about Columbus Day? And he says, "It's insulting. It makes me feel less of a human and that people celebrate that day." And he knows that Columbus, what Columbus did that day when he first discovered America was slaughter our people. Now, yes, that happened in the past. People want to say that, leave it in the past. But how can we heal a wound if there's no forgiveness? And one way to forgive is giving us our day. You know, right now, they're taking a lot of historical education out of textbooks because LPS says it creates animosity. The younger generation are learning, learning to lose their history, such as Sitting Bull and Custerd and Crazy Horse. You know, it's not, what happened wasn't, wasn't, how would I say this? It wasn't glorious. War is war. That's what happened. And being that I used to work as a contract, as a community health educator for the state, specifically for Native Americans in the state of Nebraska, you know, the lady before me wanted to bring up about our educational levels. Reservations were not meant for us to thrive. Reservation were meant for us to die. We didn't have good game. We didn't have good supplies of water. We couldn't grow. And now they take control of our land that we cannot prosper as a nation. We don't have opportunities to have jobs like you guys do. We don't have McDonald's or Walmarts or Walmarts. We don't have things like that. So we stay in poverty. We don't have a good educational system. It's hard to get teachers to come and stay. We don't have those things. And the government fails to realize that they put us in that position and they're keeping us in that position. So she wants to comment about educational levels being low. You should look at the state because they put us in there and they're keeping us in there. And my people have the highest disparity in the whole state. Thurston County was awarded a grant, five-year grant, because they have the highest disparity. And that's the reservation of Macy and the reservation of Winnebago. We have high disparity of heart disease, cancer, diabetes. It's all because we don't have the opportunity to create wealth. We don't have the opportunity to get life insurance or good health insurance. We don't have opportunity to get healthy. We don't have that. You know, I love my people and I love my home, but what the government did was put us in a bowl that we cannot escape. And like I said, the psychological damage and emotional damage of people celebrating a murderer. And the number one top thing he did was he was a sex trafficker. He stole young kids as old as 11 years old and sold them off. People don't want to see that. People don't want to see that. I'm not taking away from Italians' history. I'm just trying to make what's right. Like I said, my son says he feels insulted. He feels like nothing. How would you like that if there's something prideful from your family, like your grandparents taught you, and everybody's mocking it, but they tell you to get over it? Any questions?
John.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. I appreciate your comments. Again, I guess I go back to an earlier question I had on creating a celebration and trying to get across ethnic, ethnicity, history and so forth. And a lot of what you said and what a couple of the prior test far said was, was negative and it created such negativity. And so that's why I asked earlier about a different date, where there can be a celebratory and an educational type way to look at good things and to think ahead to the future instead of dwelling in the past. And I just, I feel this negativity and it, it just.
That's what we want to, we want you to feel that.
That's why I don't even, if there's this negativity, why would you want to celebrate on the same day as Columbus Day? Why not pick another day that has significance to the Native Americans, to the indigenous?
If we pick another day, Columbus Day will still exist. That negative day will be there. The reason why we're asking for this day is to celebrate that we're still here. We're still surviving. No matter what they did to us 500 years ago, we're still here. We're still trying to keep our culture alive. And that's the day to celebrate. I mean, politically incorrect, Columbus was looking for Indians in India. To this day, when I worked for the government, they called us American Indians. And that's not, for some reason, they cannot fix that.
Yeah. I mean, just what you said is you're trying to get at Columbus Day. You want to get rid of it. And so again, it's this negativity and I, I think you.
It's like, that's how we feel about that day.
Then why not pick another day to celebrate?
Well, John, I think you've, you've made that point. And I think we'll, we'll proceed with the next applicant. I think we have a lot of people here to, to speak. Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Leo Yankton. I am actually a radio host on 89.3 KZOM. I am also Ogallala Lakota. My tribe is located, our reservation is located in Pine Ridge, South Dakota. But I've lived in Lincoln. I spent my junior high school years, my high school years here. I raised three of my cousins. I've worked with the youth. And I was really excited when I found out that this was actually a topic that was going to be discussed here today because to me, it shows some advancement in, in, in our history, in our teaching of our history. Because when I talk to my cousins that I raised or when I talk at Family Night at the Indian Center, and I do hear about Columbus Day, I hear that Columbus discovered America. And I have to explain to youth that actually Columbus did not discover America and that Columbus actually didn't even land here first. And so there are some inaccuracies that are plagued with that. And when I look at everyone here on the, on the forum and I see you, I see that people that are people just like me, you are all living here in Lincoln, you're citizens, you're my neighbors. If I saw you and your car broke down or if I saw you and you were injured and you saw me coming, you know that you'd have somebody that's actually going to help you because we are, we're family basically, even though we're not directly related or you don't know me. Like I have that feeling, you know? And so I feel actually really proud to be here. And I feel proud that you're actually even listening to me talk about this, all right? When I'm on the radio and I'm talking about native issues, I do take a positive, proactive tempo with it, you know? Because that is important. That's very important, Mr. Kemp. I do believe that changing this to Indigenous Peoples' Day would actually help benefit not just natives, but everyone. Everyone in Lincoln, everyone abroad, because of the fact that it's going to raise questions. It's going to raise questions about our history. It's going to make aware, it's going to raise awareness. And this is, knowledge is power, you know? And there's a lot of miseducation that come along with Columbus Day. So on that, on that aspect of it, I believe it is a very positive thing for us to do, you know? And I believe it is building a bridge, not creating a void, not doing a segregation or not, you know, trying to fight a battle. What it is doing is it is uniting because it is acknowledging that we are here, that there has been some historical confusion about Columbus Day, about Columbus, Christopher Columbus. So I'm really excited about the fact that we're even talking about this. So to me, it shows progress. I know that there's other cities that are already switching it over. I know that, you know, this is not just an isolated subject for us here. And so it makes me proud. And when I do, like I said, when I look at all of you, I don't see someone that, that is different from me. I see someone who is another Lincoln citizen, who is someone else, who if I seen you on the street, I would come up to you, I would greet you, and I'd say, hey, you know, hi, it's nice to see you again, that kind of thing. If I saw you needing my assistance, I would be the first one to lend my hand. And I think the, the issues here go further than just what history is with Columbus. It's also with America and as we advance, acknowledging and correcting things like acknowledging the natives in, in, in our society. Do you have any questions for me?
Cindy.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Yankton. I do have a question about the Native American community in Nebraska. If there is any celebration around the May 12th date that was mentioned earlier that involved Standing Bear.
Is there a?
Any kind of celebration in the Native American community?
Not in general, not as far as across, broadly across the board. So there are, there are several different Standing Bear memorials, events that go on. So Standing Bear is acknowledged and Standing Bear is very influential in our community, in the Native American community and in the city of Lincoln. You know, the state capitol every year has a, a event celebrating Standing Bear. So, did that answer your question?
I think so. But are you saying that it's not the same day that it's celebrated statewide? Or it is the same day? That's what I, I'm just wondering if there are celebrations in the Native American community that surround that day?
Yes, but it's more specific to this region where Indigenous Peoples' Day would, would celebrate everyone, would celebrate all the tribes. Because there are a lot of different tribes. Standing Bear was Ponca. I'm Ogallala. I celebrate and acknowledge Standing Bear myself, even though we're two different tribes. But Indigenous Peoples' Day would be across the board.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Professor Lori Dance from the University of Nebraska, Department of Sociology and Ethnic Studies. We don't say to Americans, "Leave September 11th in the past." We don't leave 1776 in the past. We celebrate it every year. So I'm confused because I have, we have Native Americans, we have indigenous nations, members, representatives, asking for a very small thing in the bigger scheme of things. And that is to have Indigenous Peoples' Day be on October 10th. I teach at UNO and I have to deal not with ignorance. That's easy when students are ignorant. I have to deal with the illusion of knowledge. They think they know. They don't know that Columbus never made it to what we call now the United States. They don't know that Leif Ericsson and other Vikings were here. But even Leif Ericsson, 500 years before Columbus, did not discover the Americas. There were peoples here already. So as someone who teaches, I have to deal with the disnification of history when it comes to University of Nebraska students. In that, when it comes to topics like Columbus, when it comes to topics like Thanksgiving, you expect birds to come out singing and turkeys to dance around, eat me, eat me, Indians with big feathers in the back of their heads. And, you know, we should be appalled that that's what's going on in our state, that we have students who have that level of knowledge. And I see Indigenous Peoples' Day named, the date and time named by indigenous peoples being a very small gesture and not too much to ask. And in regard to Italian-Americans, I mean, Leonardo da Vinci, Marco Polo, Amerigo Vespucci, I mean, I think there, and that's just a few names. I think there are so many other people who aren't associated with the type of slaughter and transatlantic slave trade. We don't know, I'm an African-American. We think the transatlantic slave trade started from Africa to the Americas. It started from the Americas to Europe. And that was Columbus, and then after Columbus, the conquistadors. So I just stand in solidarity with those calling for this day on Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. And as a professor, I ask you all to help me, help our students have knowledge instead of the illusion of knowledge about topics like this. Nebraska can be setting a standard. Any questions?
Thank you. Welcome, sir. Please let us know your name and address.
Yeah, my name is Myron Longsoldier. I am a member of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, but I have lived here in Lincoln. Presently, I'm residing at 3737 B Street. But I have been here in Lincoln for the past 40 years or so and have known some of you because of where I have worked. You know, I have worked with the gas company, Black Hills Energy, Send Gas, Minnegasco and all that. I spent 29 years working there and, and have successfully retired from there. And, and I have never, you know, they talk about racism and stuff like that, but I have never encountered that here with the city of Lincoln, the people that, whose houses I go into. And, you know, we're not asking for much here. What we're putting all the politics aside, all the history aside, all we're asking is for the designation of November 12th as Native American Day. You know, that's, that's to recognize the people that have made a contribution to, you know, what life is like here in Lincoln today. You know, putting all things aside, I know Mrs. Lamb, Cindy Lamb, asked about May 12th. You know, to me, May 12th, it may have been Stanen Bear, Stanen Bear Day at that time, his trial or something, whatever. But May 12th, 1860, 1862 was a day when, when President Lincoln had, you know, opened up this area of the country to homesteaders. It was the date of the homesteaders where, you know, President Lincoln and his military couldn't handle the Indians anymore. It was the Indian Wars. And, you know, 1862, he hung 38 Indians from the Santee Tribe in Minnesota. And right after, in 1863, you know, he emancipated the blacks and then, you know, opened up all this, all this, all this area to the settlers. And so whenever it comes to May 12th, it reminds me of that, you know? So, you know, today, we come before you and it's not, it's not changing the Constitution or anything. It's not making it a state holiday, you know? All we're asking is for the city of Lincoln to proclaim November 12th as indigenous, I couldn't think of the word, as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you very much. Right.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Greg Keller. I live at 5331 Starling Court. I'm a teacher at Lincoln High School, where I've been for the last 27 years. I'm a co-sponsor of the Native American Caucus there. Some of my students are in the audience and some of my former students. And first, I want to apologize to Native people in the audience, especially the elders. I don't mean to speak on, on their behalf. I want to give my own perspective, and I ask for their, for their forgiveness for that. A couple of points I want to make. One is, as a white person, like you, I knew nothing about Native people growing up. I was taught nothing true about Native people. I watched cartoons and stereotypes, and that's all I knew of Native life, really, until I became a teacher, until I started teaching at Lincoln High. And some of my students opened my eyes and made me see some things that I hadn't seen before, and I did a lot of research on my own and studying and learning. And the point that I want to make with that, Mr. Camp kind of goes to your, your point about, you know, picking another day. The reason that I think it's important to celebrate it on this day is because this perspective adds to a different perspective and gives us a clearer picture of the events, right? It's more information is better. I want a more complete picture of this day, not just as a holiday, but how did it affect Native people? How did it affect other white people in this country? How did it affect Europeans? Is there's a rich story to be learned here. And again, I always tell my students, there's always more to the story. We never get the full story. There's always more to learn, and that's a good thing, and we should learn as much as we can. And again, now I have a clearer picture of those events. So, I think it is important to celebrate it on this day as a contrast and to give some balance, so that there's a more complete understanding. Here you have a number of constituents who are, who you represent, that you don't hear from probably a lot. They're asking for a simple thing. They don't have a voice. You are their voice, and they're asking you to, to speak up and do something on their behalf. And it really is a very small gesture in the grand scheme of things. They're not asking to replace Columbus Day. It's, again, it's more information, which I think is always good. Words matter. This, although this is a small gesture, it's an important one, and I think we need to send the message that you respect and understand their experience and their humanity, and that it's, it's something that you can do to help that situation. And so, I urge you, please, to do the right thing, and I appreciate your time. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Stone. I live at 832 South 47th Street here in Lincoln. I am Lakota, Si Changu Lakota. You know that as Rosebud Sioux. I was born on my reservation. I lived on my reservation, and then I went to Mission School. And I moved to Lincoln so that my, I could give my granddaughter a more diverse way of education. She graduated from Lincoln High, and she graduated from the University of Lincoln. I was a teacher. Luckily, I didn't teach social studies, because I would have had to tell people about Columbus Day. And it is with joy. Oh, my goodness, I'm jumping up and down, people. If you would pass this resolution, making it Indigenous Peoples' Day, that would be tremendous, not having that lost guy's name on that, on this day anymore. That would be really cool. That guy never made it to the Americas. He didn't discover America. Amerigo Vespucci did. The Vikings were here, like the other person said. I am a great-granddaughter of a peace chief, Chief Ironshell. He was known as the Orphan Chief, and he took in anybody who didn't have a family. He took care of them. He raised them as well as he could, and I like to think that what, that's what I have done with my children and my people around me. I am a survivor. I am one of those who survived what the government did to us, and we are surviving what the government is doing for us. I appreciate your time. Is there any questions?
John.
And first, is it Young is your last name? Did I underst-
Stone, S-T-O-N-E.
Gosh, the ears are going. I apologize.
It happens.
These, these guys are-
I thought you were saying I was a Young Stone.
Oh, you are, you are. Very, oh, I missed that. A question for you. Did I, I just want to make sure I understood. Part of your testimony, I, I thought I heard you say you'd like to replace the day with Indigenous people-
No, it's not being replaced, is it? Is that what, is that what the resolution is saying?
I just, that's what I thought I heard you say.
I was just going by what it says on the resolution, and I totally support that.
Your correct.
Having Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day.
That's what I thought I heard. So, you want it instead of Columbus?
Yes.
So, you want to replace that?
Yes, I would love to do that.
Okay. Well, thank you. And you are Young.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Frank Bearkillar. I'm a Lakota, and I'm from the Ogallala Nation. When I say I'm Lakota, there's 10 different bands, it was what commonly known as Sioux, across South Dakota, North Dakota, Montana, Montana, up that way. So, I'm just, my little group is right there from Pine Ridge, South Dakota, and that's where I grew up. Spent most of my life on the reservation. And then I moved back with my parents, lived in Shatteren, and I had, went to high school there, and then I went ahead to a year of college there. And had the fortune, my grandmother sent me to BYU to, for a year. So, I got a little bit of smarts, but enough to be, learn the English language and become articulate, because my first year, my first grade, I flunked, because I only spoke my native tongue. So, I had to be taught English to start. So, I'm here behind everybody. But anyway, I'm here because, you know, I'm part of the, of the group that introduced this, and I met with Carl, and hoping that this day here, I know it's a Columbus Day, but it, to us, if this happens here in Lincoln, I think you're number 10 or 11 across the country that's doing this, that we're starting to look at this here as a uniform way of having one day in which we will have, across this country, celebrate one day. And it may be stepping on Columbus Day, good, bad, enhance it, we'll work with it. We can develop it, we can work with it and be involved with it. But we really need a good holiday. There's a lot of other different groups that have their holidays. May, you're talking about Cinco de Mayo, and that one. And then we got the January, we got Martin Luther King, you know, other groups that are like that. Got the Chinese holiday, you got all kinds of holidays and stuff like that, but nothing for us, nothing for me. So, that's what this whole concept is, is that we need some recognition here, more than naming the streets or beautiful artwork around a rotunda. It's beautiful what they mentioned about honoring maybe Chief Standing Bear. But if we're going to go with him, how many other chiefs should we consider? All of us, my, my tribe has a lot of chiefs. Red Cloud, example. Why not him? You know, there's a lot of days that we thought about. There's a lot of things that we could offer, but at this point in time, we thought it might be just as good if we went with Columbus Day, only because it needs to bring out the history about the Columbus, his people, what happened here. We will educate, we will work with the people, and celebrate the day for ourselves, but also helping others to understand what really happened, just like you celebrate Thanksgiving. You have a beautiful day. I'm sure everybody has a nice big turkey, maybe a big ham, lots of trimmings, but a lot of times, what's missing is the thought about how that day got started. If it wasn't the natives who crossed the East Coast coming in, saving all those pilgrims, that first winter, second winter, you may not exist here, because they might have perished right there. Our people didn't allow that. They helped, nourished, make sure they got it. What those pilgrims did was that they acknowledged it, said, come on, we got plenty now, let's sit down and eat together. Thus, Thanksgiving was born. But we forgot that. Even our own family, sometimes we forget why we celebrate Thanksgiving. So, that's basically in a thrust of things, that's how I look at things. I know we got a lot of great chiefs. There could be a lot of different dates that we could pick. But I think it's more important to go along with a date that is kind of catching on across the country. If this catches on across the country in more and more each state, it might be one uniform day that we start to look at. So, that's my thoughts. And I'm asking you for help. Omo kia po, you know, that's saying, help me, please.
Thank you.
Any questions?
John.
Yeah, no, thank you. Tell me your last name again.
Bearkillar, B-E-A-R, capital K-I-L-L-E-R.
I'll make an appointment, Roy.
Don't mess, don't mess with him, John.
Yeah, I'm, oh, no, I just want, I got the Lakota and the other relationships there in the Ogallala tribe, nation, so I appreciate that. The, and gosh, I mean, I grew up, my dad, we'd go up to the Macy and all the reservations. In fact, he was writing a book before he died, didn't get it done, but he was going to talk about the 1870s and the, the whole situation with the Indian Nation. The, and you mentioned, and then this gentleman here was talking about the Mistizos and other things, and, which I appreciate your broadening my education and thinking the scope of this, it's not just Native Americans, but you get into the Mexican areas and the Incas, I suppose, Mayans and other areas and so forth. So, it broadens the perspective. And what I'm searching for is I, I still get the impression, and pardon me for this, that it's, it's an anti-Columbus type thing, and as you just said, I like the, you know, and the lady, Ms., I called her Ms. Young, well, she is young anyway, Ms., yeah, Stone. She's a Young Stone. You know, to have a, a time to celebrate Indigenous people, and I'm, I'm now thinking that Indigenous people would be a good designation, because there are a lot of nations, tribes, ethnicities involved. But to find a date, and maybe nine other jurisdictions have done it around the Columbus Day, but just because they've done it, maybe there is a better time, and I think we're smart here, and to find a time that really relates well, and maybe it doesn't need to be with Chief Standing Bear, that happens to be, it happened here in Nebraska, and a lot of history, but, and so I'm just searching for that, rather than this, again, this impression that's getting out there of anti-Columbus Day, and that's just where, and I guess I'd like help on some other days, and you mentioned the other times of celebration, and is that something we could look at to come up with a really good time that, that fits across the global Americas?
It's a thought. It's a consideration. It's something to look at all the other dates, like I was saying.
And maybe we could invite them to join us.
Yeah, there's a lot of chiefs out there that we could honor and do something like that with. There's a lot of individuals that we could recognize too, but here, in this situation here, from my studies and from our research, Columbus Day is not really celebrated. You know, state workers still continue to work, city workers still continue, school continues, you know. So, why not? You know, if you don't honor it, you know, why not let us have that day?
So, I get it, that's it. So, then, and just be forthright, then, you want to replace Columbus Day. Is that what you're saying?
If that's how you interpret it.
Well, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I want to understand.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll take the date. We'll work with it.
Okay.
You know, they can, if they, if there's a group out there and they're celebrating, you know, they're welcome to celebrate, that's fine.
Why not create your own day?
We don't, no.
Okay.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you.
Because, like I said, we're trying to develop a uniformity across the country here to, as other cities start to pick it up, we're hoping that the same date will continue, and it'll be, we'll celebrate that day all across the country, same day.
Okay.
I'm hoping it's going to be a full-fledged holiday, instead of just an awareness day. Awareness Day don't, has no teeth, and kids go to school, we still have to work. We're looking for a good holiday that we can really actually celebrate and have a cultural event, a dinner, or, you know, even just sit down and recollect and put our thoughts together. We've got a lot of history to share with a lot of people. We share a lot of that during our celebrations over there. We do that two times a year. First weekend, third weekend in August, we have major celebrations over there. We share a lot of information.
Maybe there's time in August, then, that'd be appropriate.
Those are, those would be good dates to have, and we'd do the same thing for this one here.
Thank you, Mr. Bearkillar.
With your blessings.
Thank you.
Oh.
All right. Welcome. Please let us know your name and address.
My name is Clyde Tindell. I live at 406 South Fifth Street in Seward. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the council. Good to be here again. I'll keep my comments short. Indigenous peoples, what it means, is ethnic groups who are descended from and identify with the original inhabitants of a given region. History shows that descendants of succeeding cultures of Indigenous peoples have occupied this area for thousands of years. More than 15 historic tribes have been identified as having lived, hunted, or otherwise occupied territory within the current state boundaries. Among them, the Arapaho, Iroquois, Pawnee, Cayoa, Cheyenne, Yankton, Lakota, Omaha, Panka, Osage, Comanche, Ko'apah, Ho'chunk, Oto, and Sacan Fox. Today, according to the Lincoln Public Schools, students from more than 69 tribes live in the city of Lincoln alone. Indigenous peoples played their part in the development of Lincoln into the city it now is. Many of our people worked as construction workers, carpenters, plumbers, electricians, and helped build Lincoln. Still today, many are employed as office workers, nurses, physician assistants, educators, attorneys, and architects. We asked the city council to approve Resolution 16R-208 honoring the holiday of Indigenous Peoples' Day, recognizing the many contributions of Indigenous peoples in this great city, following the example of the many cities that have already proclaimed Indigenous Peoples' Day in their cities. Thank you. Any questions?
You. Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Stephanie Mateka. I live at 329 North 35th Street. I'm up here with great trepidation, because I, I'm not sure how to express how I feel about this, but I can tell you that I've lived my entire life in Nebraska, and I think that we have to look at really acknowledging what's happening here and acknowledging that it is best to replace Christopher Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. We would never allow the Germans to celebrate the Holocaust, ever. And I think that it's time that we acknowledge that, and we acknowledge what's happened and not allow it to be celebrated in any shape or form. And Lincoln is an amazing community, and because of our diversity and the way we include people, that's one of the things that bring people here, and I think this is an important step forward. Any questions?
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Isaac Kolb. I'm an enrolled member of the Rincon Band of Luceno Indians out of Southern California. I'm also part of Rosebud Lakota. I, I come to you today as a representation for youth in our, in our, in our city, in our county. I grew up here in Lincoln, Nebraska, most of my life. And you grow up, when you grow up Native American, you grow up with a, I wouldn't say hatred, but like a, a kind of a ill feeling. but like a, a kind of a ill feeling about Columbus and all that. And sometimes you don't really know how to explain it, but the best way it's been put lately is we have historical trauma. And our people, we're still healing from when our, this country was taken, this country was conquered, this country was conquered from us. We're still healing from that. We need, we need this day to replace Columbus Day because I'm, I recently, I'm, my, my kid, I have two twins on the way. I want to be able to bring up my kids with pride to be Native American. And I want, I want them to, to know that our people are still here. We're still fighting today. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Bernard Vance Jr. I want to, I want to apologize right now for what I'm about to say because I know I'm going to hurt somebody's feelings. Mr. Camp, I believe you're right. I believe this is a anti-Columbus discussion. I'm not a young man. When I was in school, I was taught to believe that Columbus was some kind of hero. As, as it's well documented that he was a mass murderer, a rapist, amongst other things. I want to thank all the people who have come up here and spoke, but I speak only for myself. We're not trying to make an Indigenous People's Day. We're not going, hey, look at us, we're awesome. We're saying Christopher Columbus does not deserve to have a holiday. Holidays are for heroes. I'm an enrolled member of the Omaha Nation. I'm also a half-breed. I'm very fond of a saying that I created at work. I call myself the token because in my department where I work, I'm the only one who's not white. When I go up north to where my people call home, I'm the only one that is white. So we kind of have to live in two worlds. But I didn't intend on speaking today, but I wanted to let Mr. Camp know that you are right. To a lot of us, this is anti-Columbus because, as I said, heroes are for, or holidays are for heroes. And that's, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Do you want me to write first or talk first?
You can speak first, that'd be great. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak, they could come forward if, okay.
My name is Pastor Janet Goodman-Banks. My address is 1908 South 45th Street here in Lincoln, Nebraska, and I want to say that I have enjoyed everything that I've heard. I guess I have some concerns though with you, Mr. Camp, in, in your questioning. You seemed rather intense about the history that was brought before you by this young man and some others. I want to say as a pastor, I would like for you all to do the right thing and err on the side of history, the right history. We're all, we all want the children here to learn history, but we want them to learn the right history. I heard someone else say, and I have great respect and love for Cindy, as well as other people, Jane and other people on your, your council. But I don't think that them having a day, one day, is, is, is asking that much. I mean, why does it have to be coincide with something else? We have Juneteenth. Do you know what Juneteenth is? It's the oldest known celebration commemorating the ending of slavery in the United States, dating back to 1865. It was on June 19th that the Union soldiers, led by Major General Gordon Granger, landed at Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and that the enslaved were now free. I am proud to be an African-American woman. I'm glad that we have this celebration. I am also glad that it took an artist over 15 years or more to establish, and I'm talking about Stevie Wonder, that pushed and pushed and pushed for Martin Luther King Day. They were here first. I mean, we heard from a teacher that teaches sociology, an educator that came up here and gave you the facts. You heard from people's heritage. This is their life. Don't you want to err on the right side of history? Don't you want to err on the side of truth? This is what this is about. And, and you, you term it as it, well, it sounds like negativity. Well, they didn't create it. So, so the truth sometimes is difficult to hear, but we can try to make it as right as we can. Let's make this as right as we can. Every last one of you can do that. You can make it as right as you can for these people that deserve this one day. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Dakota Libb. I reside on 112 South 36th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. This is my first time being to something like this, so it's a privilege. I'd like to thank everyone that spoke before me. There's a lot of great points. I just want to reaffirm that I'm, I guess I'm for changing it from Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day because everything Columbus stood for was just horrible tyranny. He's a murderer. And I just want to keep it short and simple. I'm for the resolution of changing Columbus Day to Indigenous People's Day. Any questions?
Thank you. All right. Next speaker, please share your name and address with us.
Hi, my name is Alex Houch, and I wasn't planning on speaking today, so pardon me if I seem jittery. My address is 1837 Jefferson, and since I'm sure you're wondering, my last name is spelled H-O-U-C-H-I-N. First of all, I thank you all for the opportunity to rise and speak today, and I thank Councilman Eskridge for introducing this resolution. I rise today in support of it, and I really just wanted to make two points. First of all, I want to make it perfectly clear that this resolution does not replace Christopher Columbus Day as a, as a holiday in any capacity. Separate from that fact, I think it should. It doesn't, so we want to make sure we're talking about two different things here. If, if, if we get to a point in our society where we can actually replace it, I think that would be a, a good thing, but this is a small step. This does not destroy anything. This does not lessen anything. It creates a space alongside it for more information and more education and more opportunities to come together and talk about the differences in cultures. And the second point I wanted to make is that there was, you know, there's, and please correct me if I'm presuming too much, but it seems like there's, there's, there's a concern that designating this as Indigenous Peoples' Day will somehow step on Columbus Day and, or lessen it in some, in some fashion. And what I would like to ask the members of the council today is, what would you be seeking to preserve by protecting that date? I've heard very thoughtful questions from a few council members today, and I'd like to thank you for coming to this discussion with an open mind and asking very important questions and honoring other, you know, wonderful chiefs that have a direct bearing on not only native history but Nebraska history. So I don't want to diminish any of those, any of those things that happened today, but again, just think about what it is that you're worried about defending. So that's all for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. And before we proceed, I just want to request that in an effort to keep the public hearing moving and making sure that everyone does have an opportunity to speak in a timely manner, if you could hold your applause for the end, and we could even have a show of hands of all who are here in favor at the end, if that would be something the public would like. But in effort to keep things moving, if you could just hold your applause while we, we move through the testimony, we'd be grateful as a council. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, yeah, my name is Greg Castro. I live at 1403 E Street here in Lincoln, and I'd like to speak in support of the resolution. I recognize that it is not in fact replacing Columbus Day, so anyone who likes Columbus Day has nothing to worry about. I agree that it should replace Columbus Day. There is nothing to celebrate on that day. It's celebrating the kickoff of generations of genocide. And what we should be celebrating are America's Indigenous peoples. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joseph Russo. I'm from Norfolk, Nebraska. I was raised by my mother and my grandmother, strong Irish-German woman. They raised me, and I look up to their strength, and I'm a benefit from that strength to this very day. My father is a Lakota. Our reservation is up in Cheyenne River, South Dakota, up in Lake Mowbridge, Eagle Butte, north of Pierre. I am an enrolled member of two nations. One nation called the Nation of the United States, and I am a veteran of the United States. I served honorably in the United States Navy, and I'm an honorably discharged veteran. I am also a member of a nation, the Lakota Nation. And I stand before you today in support of this resolution. I would also like to say that I do not want to share that day by calling it, giving it two names. The, as, as suggested, my vote would be no to that. My understanding also is that the city of Lincoln does not have any official designation for this day that we are seeking to have be named Indigenous Peoples' Day. So I'm struggling to find a reason to add any other name to that day. All you would really need to do on that day is open up the newspapers and see all the sales, the Columbus Day sales for those, for that day. So there's, however we feel, we would not be unable, unable to erase Columbus Day from the same time that we are requesting to honor Indigenous peoples. Also, one other benefit from, if this resolution were to be passed, would be to individuals like myself who grew up without my father in my life, who grew up without the native understandings and that, and that opposite perspective. This, if this day would have been in place perhaps when I was a youth, I would have began to understand the importance of Indigenous people to this state and to this nation. And that's something I feel I truly missed out upon because, as many of us in this room, I was taught differently, and so I grew up with, with, without that understanding and with, with the, pretty much the dominant culture's worldview of, of Native peoples. And there, all those labels, you know, savages, and, and I could go on, so. But I would, I'm up here to provide my support and to say, no, I would not want to share that, the name within our resolution. I would like to keep it as is. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for listening.
Good evening, welcome.
Hi, my name's Katiri Hinman-Petto, and I am an enrolled member of the Winnebago Tribe of Nebraska, and my family's also from the Omaha Tribe. I am a pharmacy student at Creighton University, so I guess one of the points that I'd like to bring across is you hear them speak about how there are so many disparities among our youth and how reading levels are so much lower than what they should be for grade levels. And I'm extremely fortunate in that I had the opportunity to go to college and also went on to pharmacy school. But having a day like Columbus Day where we are celebrating something that is so tragic and something that is so hurtful to Indigenous people, it makes it really difficult for our youth to grow up and be proud of who they are. And if you aren't proud of your identity, how are you going to be successful? How are you going to go out into the world and be successful and do something and have your contribution made when you feel like you're less than human? And so I think from that perspective, it's, this is extremely important, and it's also incredible that this is even something that you guys are willing to talk about to, you know, recognize this day as Indigenous People's Day rather than Columbus Day. And the state of Nebraska is the home of four federally recognized Native American tribes. So I think that that is something to take into account that, especially what, sorry, I can't remember his name, but he was saying that there are, I believe he said 69 Native tribes that are in just the Lincoln School System. So I think that that impact that it has on our identity as Native people is extremely important, and especially how our youth are going to go about into our world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hey, I'm talking to you. My name is Michael Wolf Sr., a member of the Omaha Tribe of Nebraska. I heard the name, I live at 311 Dale Drive, I'm sorry. I heard the name Stanley Bear come up. I'm proud to say that Chief Standing Bear, I'm a direct descendant of Chief Standing Bear. My grandmother, Jenny Standing Bear. From the stories that my grandmother acknowledged, things that she shared with me, things that she's instilled in me. My grandmother was like a lot of grandmothers, very strong. At the time, the ordeal that was going on with Standing Bear being moved, my grandmother was moved to the Omaha Reservation, and there, our family took care of her because he didn't want her moving down, involved in all that situation. He wanted to protect her. And then she grew up there, and she married my, my father, grandfather, Frank Wolf. And Frank Wolf was from the Durkland, Tapah, and I follow that from a paternal order. My, a story that I heard from my grandmother, relatives of my grandmother, my grandfather wanted to marry my grandmother. Is that, he seen her and he fell in love with her. And right away, he ran back and he grabbed the horse. And he ran over and he took it to her, and when he took the horse to her, she looked at him, he turned around this way. And she put her head down, he was sick, and ah, dang it. So he took off, he went back, and he got six more horses. So he came back and he gave the horses to her, and that's how they got married. And this is, that's where I come from. And that was one of the, the stories that I had. Is the, also is that my grandmother informed us that whenever we lived in the bluffs of Nibbera, the pony came, and my grandmother was small then. And she remembers it very clearly that the pony came to steal the woman and steal horses. And she remembers her grandfather, Standing Bear, standing up and having a spear and going after them and fighting, fighting them off. And I know that if Standing, the name Standing Bear came up about naming after him. Well, Standing Bear was one of the first human rights movement back in the day. He spoke up for the people. He befriended the white man, and he entrusted him. And he depended on him so that things can take orders, so things can be the way they are with the Panka tribe and give him his dignity back. Well, I'm sure that if Standing Bear was here, he would ask the same thing, give us our dignity back. And so we ask is that of all this, these years and me being in the boarding school and school, that was things enforced on me as a child, that I had to, I had to learn these things, who Christopher Columbus was. And if I didn't get it right, then I would get a D or a bad grade. I always got a bad grade. First, I didn't know who the guy was and I really didn't care. The point was... The point was, is that it was imposed on me. It was something that was, was put on me, that I, I had to learn, it was part of the school curriculum. But as I matured and got older, you know, I thought, you know, I'm gonna do something about this. I went to U N L, I graduated, became a teacher for two years, and that's one thing I always told my kids is investigate, 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 find out what's learned, and don't take things for gospel, because life, things are always changing, you're gonna always learn things differently. So that's something that I've always learned, even for myself today, you know, I love learning. I love, love to see changes, I see, love to see things come about. I moved here in two thousand thirteen with my family. I have two children, and they, they love the system, the school system, they love the town, I love the town, it's beautiful, wonderful, I love the diversity, and I'm turning around, I hear different things, different organizations being celebrated, and for myself, I'm in solidarity with this change, I do. I think that Columbus Day should just be vanquished, should be gone, and give, give us our turn here, let us have our, our moment in time, through that, that time here, please. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Anita Zakretsky, Z like in zebra, A K R, Z like in zebra, E W, S like in Sam, K I, twelve thirty Irish Point Place in Lincoln. I first want to say that I didn't intend to speak today. I've lived in Lincoln for fourteen years, this is my first attendance at this meeting. I was very excited to hear of this resolution. I'm a grandma, I have two little granddaughters. My oldest granddaughter is now in first grade, she attends Seward School. Last year, I was watching her, and she was talking about Columbus Day. And then she started talking about the Indians, and she was talking about the Indians in past tense. She didn't tell me anything of the truth, because it's not being taught in the school system. And, and it really broke my heart that my granddaughters are growing up celebrating Columbus Day. I do not believe that Columbus Day should exist anymore. It should be Indigenous Peoples' Day, I am in full support of that. It, it really broke my heart, though, listening to her, and I have been trying to teach my granddaughter, whenever I do have her, the truths as much as I can without talking about the truths that, that disturb us as adults as to what happened in history. She will learn from me when I see put with the age level, but I just wanted to let you know that. I think we can put Lincoln, Nebraska on the map as being a very progressive, diverse city, and, and a place that I'm, I am proud to be living in Lincoln, but I would be even more proud to speak with people, my family back in Colorado, and other friends I have in, in other states that I've lived in, that look what Lincoln, Nebraska did. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Charlotte Bordeaux-Kanoflecek. I've been here before. I think I invited some of you to, to come to the Capitol when I was with Occupy, and sleep in the teepee and eat soup with us. I'm known as a rambler, so I was gonna censor myself and not come up here, but the gentleman spoke about Columbus Day and his having to learn it in school. And I'm a member of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe, I forgot to say that, and I've lived in Lincoln most of my life. When I first came here to Lincoln in grade school, I can't remember, it was third or fourth grade, I think it was Hayward School, they were singing "One Little, Two Little, Three Little Indians." I was like, huh? You know, and then my daughter went to school here, and she went to Elliott, and she had to take a test to, she was gonna be in the gifted program or not. And one of the questions they asked was, what year did, you know, who discovered America? And the correct answer, of course, is Columbus fourteen ninety-two. And she missed that one, and I think she missed one or two questions to get into the gifted. So they called me in, we talked about, and I said, well, I didn't teach her that, I deliberately teach, taught her that, no, Columbus did not discover America. And I think what people are asking for here is correcting the historical record. We've gotta have our history right, you know, we've gotta have our history right. And, you know, he didn't make it here. And what's being taught in the schools is, is a myth that didn't happen. And as a, you know, maybe if, a long time before, they'd made Indigenous Peoples' Day another day, but it's kind of salt in the wound to celebrate Columbus Day and say, he discovered America, and make everyone learn that. That's propaganda, and it serves, doesn't serve a good purpose. Recognizing, I personally, I'm gonna say something crazy, but I personally have always secretly fantasized that Thanksgiving would be Indigenous Peoples' Day. And that's because of the, the stories about, you know, people coming here and, because of the ancient law of hospitality. I've been reading a lot about it, goes back to the Greeks, it started the Trojan War. There, you know, it's in the Middle East, it's in the Bible, when the angels come to visit, the Sodom and Gomorrah kind of story, where the angels come and they're not received, because there was this ancient law of hospitality, that, you know, travelers and strangers might be gods or angels. And it's something you find in indigenous cultures, too, but it's universal. And I always thought that Thanksgiving was kind of like, maybe remembering that ancient law of hospitality, that, you know, we bring everybody together and don't turn anyone So, but I think the, so anyway, that's just my secret idea that, you know, it's not a secret anymore. But Thanksgiving, I always thought would be cool, you know, and then we could all make that Indigenous Peoples' Day. Anyway, I'll quit rambling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Grant Shangru, S H A N G R E A U X. I'm Oglala Lakota, and even in my name is kind of a, it's, the name was actually a French name, because there was a French patriarch that married into the Oglala tribe that my name came from, and it was just written down incorrectly when people were giving peoples' names. All the names that you hear from, from people here, they're, that's not their, you know, the, the Indian people, that wasn't their real name, that was the name that was kind of forced to be written down for them when the government was taking the census. All I really want to say is that I'm also a teacher, I work with young children before they enter public school, before they're, you know, three to six years old. And so it's not even our education system that's teaching this, because I, I have had children say to me that there aren't any Indians anymore, that they all, they're all gone, it's just a thing from the past, just like the woman before was speaking. So it's not something that's just coming from our schools, it's something that's deeply embedded in who we are, and I think what we're here today to do is to try to change that, to try to make it so that my people and all of the people of North and South America can heal and really acknowledge our continued existence and our coexistence. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others who wish to speak in favor of this item? Would anyone like to speak in opposi, oh, one more in favor? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. It's call and response. Thank you. My name is Thomas Christie, seventy-two twenty-one, South Forty-second Street. I, too, did not plan to speak. I came to show solidarity to my indigenous native brothers and sisters, but sitting here, I couldn't leave without speaking. My heart would not allow me to. I'm speaking for Thomas Christie, but I have many experiences in many venues in my life, personal and professional life. One of those experiences is with Boys State. Former mayor, myself, and one of my native brothers, Frank Lemire, for the last ten or so years, we've spoken to Boys State, close to five hundred boys from across the state, and we've done this every year. And one of the things that I tell those boys every year is that, because it's about leadership, one of the things I emphasize to them every year is that, if they're going to be a leader, if they're gonna have leadership, they must be leaders of all the people, not some of the people, not a particular group, but they must be leaders of all the people. And in order to be leaders of all the people, you must have truth. You must follow the, the scientific method, which is to seek the truth. And I've heard many people tonight make reference to speaking the truth, seeking the truth, which is the scientific method. I tell those boys every year that we live in a multicultural America, it has always been that. It was that before any of us came to these shores. Over five hundred nations was part of this land that we all live on. But I ask you as council members, you are representatives of all the people, and I ask you to represent these people. I'm asking you to represent them. They're not asking for much. In some ways, I'm embarrassed. I will be even more embarrassed if you do not support this resolution, because I believe each and every one of you are better than that. And I ask you to represent all the people. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Christie. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this item?
Yes, my name's Marty Ramidis. I'm a resident of Scotts Bluff, Nebraska, son of Mexican immigrants. In many ways, what we're talking here is, is a lot. Economics, political, prejudice, pride, you name it. On the one hand, you heard the voice of the people, which is what democracy is about. On the other hand, we're caught up from your side, who are the policymakers? And as a result of our history, we're really caught, all of us. But one thing you cannot take away from us is our history, the past and the present and tomorrow. We really can't do anything about yesterday, we only have about five hours left, what can you do? But there's tomorrow. Tomorrow's a guarantee, and you're talking about the future and trying to correct a But one thing about democracy is, you're the voice, we have to come here through a microphone. Many of these people have never come here before, as you witnessed. So it's a combination of a lot of things happening. It's testing your individual courage, your character of yourself and of Lincoln and Nebraska. Next year, two thousand seventeen, it's a sesque centennial, don't ask me to spell it, but it's celebrating Nebraska's statehood history. I'm a member of that commission, planning this big party. One of the biggest challenges I've had personally in all my life is trying to convince this commission. You cannot leave people who have been here for thousands and thousands of years, not this time around. We are not going to be left out. We have fulfilled the American dream, as you heard from the stories, veterans, teachers, plumbers, construction workers, grandparents. What more can you ask of these people? That they have not given. And for us to come and ask for our dignity, that takes a lot of guts. On behalf of those who have been invisible, I think they call it justice. You must consider what you've heard. Take a backseat, take a deep breath. Nebraska, the good life, they're trying to make back the good life. The good life for whom? And the good life from what perspective? This is the good life. What's going on tonight is the good life. But don't put it to a particular event called Columbus Day. To me, I see indigenous as presenting the past, the present, and tomorrow, of all people, of all couples. Just look up the word indigenous, and that should help you really consider this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to come forward and speak in opposition of it, to this item?
My name is William R. Booth III, I live at twenty-eight fifteen Jane Lane. I don't object to the idea of an Indigenous Peoples' Day, but I do object to it on the date that is being proposed, and I also object to it on the language of the proposition. I've noticed on the banner here that only part of the language is being shown. Part of it says, "The city of Lincoln has an obligation to oppose the systematic racism towards indigenous people." Well, I believe that they've already adopted that in other resolutions. City has ordinances, resolutions saying that they're against racism. We have a commission that supports investigating racism. This actually says that currently in Lincoln, without any doubt, there's a systematic racism towards indigenous people, not that there may have been in the past, not that some people are racist, because I'm sure there are, but actually it says that it exists and it's systematic, and I object to that language being in there and would suggest it be tabled till that's removed.
Excuse me, it, it was removed.
Okay, and the newspaper yesterday didn't say that, so I apologize. I was going off the Lincoln Journal Star's article, so I do apologize about that. Also, one of the native tribes or indigenous tribes in a lawsuit regarding Pender has argued that the federal government should be the, or the treaties are the arbiter of anything having to do with indigenous people, and have so gone to the Supreme Court, gone to Congress and Senate. I say again, let the government, the federal government, deal with Columbus Day and Indigenous People's Day. There is an actual August ninth declared by the United Nations, says International Day of the World's Indigenous People, and I would say that that would be the day to go ahead and have the city of Lincoln have an Indigenous Peoples' Day, when every other country in the world that has indigenous peoples has it. Now, I agree that Christopher Columbus was the, did not discover America. I agree that Native Americans and indigenous people have made significant contributions to our modern culture, and we wouldn't have survived had it, had it not been for the East Coast peoples. And we wouldn't have survived had it not been for the East Coast Peoples when the pilgrims came here. All that is absolutely true and needs to be recognized and should be taught in the schools. But unfortunately, you ladies and gentlemen, don't control the education system. That's for another forum. You can make recommendations, but textbooks are written, bought, and that's something else to be addressed somewhere else. Also, in 1977, there was an International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in America. And one of the things that they suggested was replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous People's Day. That was changed. That was the United Nations Conference that was held in Switzerland. And eventually, when the United Nations went ahead and had Indigenous People's Day, they were mindful of the United States' holiday and chose August 9. Also, there was something called the First Continental Conference on 500 Years of Indian Resistance that was held in Quito, Ecuador, where they went ahead and chose to have, in 1992, Indigenous People's Day celebrated everywhere they could. And Berkeley, California, was one of the first places where protests took place, and this was changed. And Berkeley, California, has a way different culture than we have here in Lincoln, Nebraska. You are the representatives of the people. According to what I've found, there's less than 1% Indigenous people in this state. Everyone can vote. I suggest a petition. Put it on the ballot if you want to change the holiday, if you want to replace the holiday. If you want to do it on August 9, it's a wonderful idea. And that's all I have, is are there any questions?
Carl.
Just to clarify, the newspaper article that came out about this subject had an unfortunate and misleading headline to the effect of that this is about replacing Columbus Day. The city doesn't have anything in the books on Columbus Day, so this action isn't replacing Columbus Day. Columbus Day is a federal holiday. It's a state holiday. It's not anything that this body has any authority over.
I understand, sir, and I understand they made an error. But it's disingenuous to suggest that it's not with that intent. It was the intent at the First Continental Congress Conference, as some of the people here today have openly said that they would like to see it replaced. And yes, you are 100% correct. But it's part of a politically correct effort. If this city and this city and this city and this city and this city's councils, not the people in the city, but the councils, go ahead and use their authority to change it, then why isn't it revales changing? And then that can be used to go ahead and keep the movement going like that. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Okay. Does the applicant wish to have any rebuttal?
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I think that it's clear what the elders in the community want to see happen. And I know that there is a lot of discussion about how many of us there may be that have some quantum of Native American blood. And I don't think that that should be any kind of litmus test as to whether or not we should take action to correct some of the egregious things that have been done to Native Americans throughout the history of white contact on this continent. And I do feel that it is important to keep this on this day. And as the last speaker said, even the United Nations, back a number of years ago, decided to not poke the bear of the United States and mess with our idea of Columbus Day, full well recognizing that there needed to be a recognition that Indigenous people need to have that dignity and validity restored in some form or fashion. Now, the idea that we should find some other day, find some other holiday to usurp essentially by bagging it onto the Standing Bear Holiday, diminishes, diminishes the celebration of what Standing Bear did and what he understood to be his mission was to put an end to the things that were started with Columbus. With those things that began then, their bookend events, they should not be lumped together in one day or one recognition because they're not the same thing. Additionally, I believe that we have a clarity of understanding about what Columbus was and what he did. And I think that it behooves our leaders in our community to try and do the right thing for all of our people in this community because there are a lot more Native Americans in this community than you understand or recognize. It's not about, are you affiliated member of a tribe? There's a lot of people who have Native American descent. I am among them. My son is Ogla La Lakota, and I'm very proud of him. And I don't think that it is appropriate for you to try and tell us that we should not recognize the suffering and the pain that we have all gone through for generations upon generations by disingenuously saying, why should we rename Columbus Day when we should not be honoring this individual to begin with? Do the right thing, please, for the children, for the future, because we don't need to continue down this path of division. We are all Americans. Russell Means said back in the 70s, in the days of the American Indian Movement, and this were times when things were really polarized. He said, "Anyone who's born in this country, on this land, is an Indigenous American." And he was right. We all are. And we need to get beyond some of these other differences and do the right thing for setting the record straight. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Right. Any questions for any staff? Okay. Please call the next item.
All right. Next, our public hearing ordinance's second reading, item 14, amending chapters 2.62, 2.65, and 2.66 of the Lincoln Municipal Code with tax-qualified plan language to obtain a new favorable letter of determination from the Internal Revenue Service.
Good evening, counsel.
Excuse me. We are going to vote on this later, so you don't have to run away.
And my testimony will be scintillating on the pension.
IRS letter.
Good evening, counsel. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. As we introduced, every four years, the plan is updated with IRS code to preserve the tax-exempt status. We have received a favorable letter from the IRS pending the adoption of the amendments to the code. And that's what we bring before you today. The amendments are, I will say, not really significant in nature. One amendment deals with rollovers. The other amendment basically deals with investments through a certain type of trust. These have been reviewed by our legal counsel, Ice Miller, out of Indianapolis, and they have presented these amendments.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Didn't think so. All right. Please call the next item.
That concludes our public hearing. We can move into the voting session then. Public hearing resolutions. Item 12 is the municipality program agreement with N D O R for the 27th Street at the I-80 interchange on an off-ramp project introduced by Fellers.
Sub moved.
Second.
Seconded by Roy. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge. Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Barrett.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item 13 is the resolution declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city and encouraging other institutions to recognize the day, introduced by Carl Eskridge.
Second?
Sub moved.
Seconded by Jane. Discussion? Roy?
I'm going to beg the forgiveness of my colleagues because I usually don't speak for very long, but I have something I want to say tonight about this. As a young person, I spent six years living next to the Navajo Hopi Reservation in Flagstaff, Arizona. And then I spent another seven years of my life living next to the Blackfoot Indian Reservation in Pocatello, Idaho. And spent time on those reservations. And I can tell you that the persecution of the Native American people has not ended. You know, I have a historical perspective of the things I do. And John called me and wanted to know about my ideas about a different day, and I provided him with information about a different day, the 12th of May, and the historical significance of that. However, I acknowledge there is a historical bias. For many years now, I have noted that whenever the, there were battles or armed conflict between the United States Army and Native Americans, when the Army won, it was called a battle, but when the Native Americans won, it was called a massacre. There's a bias that is there today in our schools, in our teachings. And while there are good points to be made for another point of view that some people have expressed this evening, I believe that there is a keen interest that we all should have to tell our neighbors who are Native Americans that they are of great worth and that their cultures of great worth. And I intend to support this resolution.
Carl.
I want to thank the representatives from the Indian Center who first brought this to me and then to us last month. Thank you for opening this door. This was a very important night, I think, for our community. As I stated to the last questioner or testifier, we don't have Columbus Day on the books in Lincoln as a city holiday. This book, this resolution does not remove anything that's currently there. But it does provide something that we've heard tonight that is vitally, vitally important to this community. The history that we have, that all of us have as a people, is always a mixed bag. There are wins and losses. There are things we celebrate and things we regret. And as we heard from Mr. Keller, teaching the full story of the founding of this nation, the story of all the people of this nation, you got to have all the characters. You got to tell it all. And I'm as convinced tonight, more so than ever before, of the importance of making this designation and hope my colleagues will support the resolution because I think it really is important for our community. And one last thing. I'm kind of a transformational person. I like to see things that maybe aren't the way I would like for them to be and try to move them along and get them to a better place. Let's transform Columbus Day. Let's make it a day for those Italians, for those who want to celebrate that as part of their heritage, fine, let them do it. But for those others who question the fullness of the story and what it means to our full American story, to what we have been as a community, that helps. I think that really helps. Thank you.
Cindy.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. And I want to especially thank those of you that actually addressed my question when you came up. I appreciated that the first speaker, when I asked if you want to share the name of the day, invited the participants to come up and voice their opinion because I did want to know that. Is it really about sharing the day, enhancing the day, or is it about replacing the Columbus name in the holiday? So I do appreciate everyone that came up and addressed that for me. I do not have the history that you have. And I am greatly touched, and none of us can even pretend to know what it's like to have that history. I am moved today beyond words. I think that you're right. It's not too much to ask. And because it's you requesting the day, who am I to change the day? I didn't see anybody really advocating from the Native American community for another day, and I understand why. So today, I intend to support this resolution. I believe we have an amendment, maybe just for some of the language that we dealt with. But I think this is a great, great resolution. And I want to thank you all for imposing that, your views on us. And I'm going to be proud to move forward and support this. Thank you.
Jane.
I too am very grateful for all the testimony that you all presented, but more importantly, the education that you have given to all of us. I think it's very important that we move forward with this resolution in recognition. But most importantly, you are raising awareness that we all sorely need. And I hope to be able to celebrate with you on all the great things that you have done to make America, to make an America that we can all be proud of. So thank you very much. I look forward to celebrating this holiday and continuing to have that great dialogue and to educate everyone, certainly in the city of Lincoln and our state. So thank you.
Trent.
I want to thank Carl for bringing this forward in response to the folks that came a few months ago. I am incredibly impressed at how many people showed up for a resolution. And I'm also impressed at how many people drove from a ways away to get here. That's incredibly impactful, and it speaks to how important this is to the people that it's going to affect. I'm happy this is going to happen. I think it's a small thing that we can do for you in making a day just in Lincoln, Nebraska. So with that, I'll support it. Thank you, Carl.
John.
Well, I want to thank you all, too. We had, according to my count, 28 of you who testified, and that is a large number. I don't know if it's the record, but it's very significant, and we all thank you. And essentially because there were a lot of directions that you came. I have to confess, part of my training is as an attorney. And we spend three years in law school, and there are a few attorneys in here in the audience, too. We're taught to ask questions. And you know, through questions, we gain what, an old saying that I learned in college, that our flight through life is sustained by the power of knowledge. And so I want to thank you for letting me ask those questions. Pastor, you said there was an intensity to my questions, and my son tells me that at times. Now, he's an engineer attorney, so I don't know what to do. And I don't mean to come across that way, but I like to ask questions to find out. And as Carl, initially, when we had our open mic and this was brought forward, there were questions. And I've been trying to understand the true nature of what people are seeking to do. I like to look at the educational opportunities we have because I think that this resolution creates a wonderful educational opportunity. Glad that Mr. Keller is doing his work there at Lincoln High. I'm a J Street grad myself, so I appreciate that. And also, what I want to thank all of your coming and letting us also ask and understand the direction that you're seeking. So I hope that, you know, I'll support this. I was just wondering if there was a better day. There was a gentleman, I guess he may have left, that, of Mestizo, and so bringing up some other Indigenous ethnicity. And so I think it's important to understand what will help create the best educational forum. And if this date works well, then so be it. Let's go with that. And then again, I encourage everyone from every element, let's go forward. And then again, I encourage everyone from every element, let's go forward, let's educate, and let's go, continue our flight through life with knowledge. So thank you.
I want to echo my colleagues in thanking all of you who've come out tonight to share your perspectives so eloquently, and thank you to the folks from the Indian Center who approached us at open mic and to Carl for bringing this resolution forward. You've given us an opportunity to honor our nation's heritage more completely, and creating a day to commemorate the contributions, past and present, of Native Americans to our country doesn't diminish a single person in our community. It really elevates the humanity of us all. Please call the roll.
We, we have a procedural. We, we need to make sure we're voting on the right thing. So Jeff, we had, we had the motion, but we have a substitute resolution. Just want to make sure we've got that on.
Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. Yes, the amendment that you offered is an amendment that replaces the entire resolution with a new language.
Okay. And so Theresa, on the floor, we have?
We have the original, so we just need a motion to accept the substitute.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl and seconded by Roy. Discussion?
Yeah, let me just explain a little bit about the substitute. This, this amendment actually came about as a result of a conversation that Cindy Lamb and I had last week, that there were just a few things that, that really weren't necessary, that the city instructing Lincoln Public Schools, for example, about what, how they should do their business, and, and that was appropriate, that we, that's not our job. So, so that was removed, and similarly, some, some directions toward businesses that wasn't really our role either. So those things were removed, and that's what's presented for us.
Discussion? I still think it's wonderful to encourage all to think more broadly about our nation's heritage, and I appreciate the trouble, the care you put, with which you put this together, Carl.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
That was the substitute.
All right.
That was the substitute resolution vote. Now we're going to vote on the main resolution, okay? So let's do it again here in just a moment. Good practice, though. Nice job.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
It's a rare sight.
Thank you.
Going to appreciate that, Mom. All right.
Our public hearing ordinance's second reading is item fourteen. Ordinance's third reading, item fifteen, a real estate sales agreement between the city and Jeffrey Barclay for the sale of city-owned property located at eight oh one South Twenty-seventh Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Moved by Carl and seconded by Roy. All right. If we could have the applicant come forward. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Could you? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Jane.
I, I had some initial concerns about the intersection and the potential for expansion, but I had an opportunity to, to drive up and down Twenty-seventh Street and, and realize that there are very few designated right turn lanes or even cutouts for that. And I think the locations that have, have it are minimal. I mean, they're certainly by the People's Health Center, certainly by Vine Street, but not, they didn't even have one by O Street. So I, I feel very comfortable with moving forward and approving this.
Other discussion?
No.
John.
No, I, I also drove it. It's, it's kind of on the wrong side of the street to have a right turn lane. I think they could have one, I think, when you go to O Street and some of those other intersections you mentioned. We just didn't have the right of way, and so always hesitant, and as David knows, we discussed this heavily a few years ago, and, thank you.
Okay.
Let's vote.
All right. Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. Item sixteen is the lease agreement with Lancaster County Adult Probation Services for the lease of office space in the MSC at nine oh one West Bond Street for the period of July first, two thousand sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by Trent. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
No cheers on that one?
No. Resolutions on first reading are items seventeen through twenty-five. A special public hearing shall be held on Monday, October third, two thousand sixteen, at three P M. for setting a tax rate to set the tax request at an amount different than the property tax request for the prior year on the following resolution. It's approving the twenty sixteen seventeen city tax rate of point three 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 six six per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Our one ordinance on first reading is item twenty-six. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time.
Oh, no.
For nine years, David Landis, forty-eight, ten, North Forty-Eighth, I've watched and listened to a council in various forums handle a wide variety of city policy, and as a citizen, I want to say how well the council reflected your constituents tonight. Your performance was a wonderful reflection on this city.
My name's Tim Haruza. I'm appearing today on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. Sorry, I've got a couple of things I'll pass around. Sorry, I won't keep you longer than we need to. Again, Tim Haruza, on behalf of the Lincoln Independent Business Association. I handed to the city clerk a, three different documents. One is a copy of a letter that we submitted to the council and to the mayor and his administration with regard to the Commission of Industrial Relations, the C I R. The second is a, a copy of a draft resolution that we would ask that, that maybe the council consider as we move forward. And the third is a copy of a letter that the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners submitted last year to the state legislature with regard to the Commission of Industrial Relations and the interim studies that the Nebraska Legislature's been considering. One thing that, that we reached out to, to this council for is that we're, we're seeking and we're asking the city to take an active role in some of the changes that might come to fruition with regard to how the C I R operates. As many of you know, and, and maybe the public does, but may not quite know, is that the Commission of Industrial Relations has a, a large bearing on our city budget with how we negotiate with labor unions and public employee unions that are employed by the city of Lincoln. What we're hoping, there are, there are a number of state senators that have some interest in adjusting kind of how that system operates statewide, and we think that it's absolutely important that the city of Lincoln, being the second-largest municipality in the state of Nebraska, be actively engaged in how any changes that might come forward do come forward. There is a public hearing on an interim study that's kind of looking at the C I R process and how that works. It's scheduled for October twenty-first over at the State Capitol Building. And I guess I'm, I'm coming to you with a potential proposed resolution that we think would, would offer an indication and a commitment from the city of Lincoln, the city council, the Mayor Byler's administration, if they so choose to pursue it as well, but from this city council, that we believe that if changes are going to come forward, that we take an active role in formulating those changes and shaping that, because it does have such a large impact on us as the second-largest municipality in the state dealing with public employee unions. So with that, I, I included the, the county board's letter from last year at Councilman Estridge's request earlier today. I've spoken with a number of you, both separately and some together, about this. We think that that type of letter might be some, a, a good way for the city of Lincoln to get engaged, to come forward with some ideas or some, some problems that you see in the process, or some ways that the process could be improved, and submit that to our state senators as they start working on formulating some potential changes moving forward. So that's offered simply as an example of kind of what the county board did last year during an interim study that dealt with the changes and how those have impacted the state of Nebraska since two thousand eleven. With that, I know it's been a long night. I appreciate you guys considering, I guess, our request. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have, so.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to speak?
This is open.
For any item not on our agenda or on a planned for a future agenda.
William R. Booth, the third, twenty fifteen, Jane Lane, here in Lincoln. Couple of things that I've noticed lately, because I've started to pay attention to what goes on, especially after the mayor decided to sue you because of a disagreement over the budget. First of all, I think it's a horrible waste of money that he decided to sue you, as if, since we're already, he's complaining about money, but let's spend more money. The second thing, I've noticed that in bargaining, collective bargaining agreements, we be, we seem to be giving up public transparency. The police union, as I understand, it has something in there about what information can be kept in a database and released to the public with regard to alleged allegations of misconduct and any disciplinary, and that's a union function. I think that it's not right for the city to agree to give away the citizens' rights to have information. I also think that since everybody knows someone was accused of something, because it's usually in the paper, if it gets to that point, it could be unfair to the officer involved. And if he actually was cleared and there wasn't an issue, that should be brought forward. And also, I think, would keep people from making false allegations. And I know there are penalties in place if people do falsely accuse someone of something, but I still don't think a union ought to be able to go ahead and limit our, the public's right to know, and you guys shouldn't agree to it. And could I, I don't know if in this form I can ask a question, but I've heard of someone say that several years ago, Lincoln passed a non-funded mandate by the voters for the city to repair sidewalks. Is that a true statement? Came from Kobe, so I thought it was. It seems to me that the mayor can create a job for Tom Cassidy and essentially let him write his own job profile, and then make him the city's highest-paid employee, but says we don't have the money to go ahead and repair sidewalks. But costs how much money to fund him and his secretary and his staff? Why couldn't? And he says you guys don't do your jobs correctly, but isn't he supposed to follow what the citizens vote to go ahead and have done? We can be ignored, but he can't be. It doesn't seem right. And I don't know if there's anything you can do about it, but I certainly think that's something maybe you should instruct your attorneys to go ahead and point out, that he seems to be only concerned when it's him making the rules. But when the majority of the citizens tell him that something ought to be taken care of, it's okay to ignore us. And as far as I know, it's a strong mayor, mayoral government, so there's very little you can do about it, other than, I guess, make a protest in the budget and maybe send him a memo. With that, I'm finished.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Roy and seconded by Cindy. Please call the roll.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Camp.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Fellers.
Yes.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.[1776.25]